Okay. Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening and welcome to the March 21st, 2023 City Council Meeting of the City of Wyndham. A couple of things that we will note if you are listening on the cable channel. We do not have video, so you'll have to put up with us speaking into our mics loud and clear, folks. So with that, I would like to add to the agenda. If I don't have any disagreement from the council is to add a, there's a one pager that's in front of you. This is something that came up that we'd like to take action on if possible tonight. It's for the community center is hiring for a union part-time position. Does the council object to that or have any questions? Okay, we will add that under item number six. Of which we already have a personnel recommendation as well. So with that, this evening, we have the consent agenda that include the council minutes of March 7th, Utility Commission, March 3rd, HRA, March 8th, Park and Recreation Commission, March 8th, Community Center Commission, March 13th, ADA, March 13th, Planning Commission, March 14th, and the February 28th meeting notes. Library Board on March 14th also included our license applications, SOLEDA amplification permit for the fairgrounds, North Commercial Building, and the regular bills. Council has to take action or have questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Marv, second by Dennis. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Department heads. There we go.
Good evening, Andy Spielman, building and zoning official. I have, I have an item on the agenda coming up, but I wanted, under department heads, just to update the council on a few projects that we have going on right now. The first is this land use code revision. Our current code was written in 2023. Between staff and planning commission, we saw a need to review the code just to make sure the codes are still relevant to the city's needs, property owners' needs. A few ordinances, like the parking ordinance that's come under question a couple of times, and the council has directed it back to planning commission for review. Our fence ordinance subdivision standards have also been kind of questioned along with permitted and conditional uses in each zoning district. So with so many areas, we thought it would be best just to do a review of our entire chapter 151 subdivisions and 152 zoning code. With that, we brought in a consultant. We budgeted for and hired a consultant. This is a professional land use planner. I'm pretty comfortable interpreting and administering the code, but I wouldn't consider myself an expert when it comes to writing code. I also thought it was important maybe to get an outside perspective, somebody that can look at it impartially and review it based on their experience with other communities. The commission's been working on this for a couple of years. We've met 10 or 11 times basically just for this. We've had a couple of special meetings to try and keep moving with it. Five times, the consultant has been here to meet with the planning commission. That's on top of, well, in the beginning, bi-weekly phone calls and conference calls with the consultants. We're getting very close to the end of this. We plan to have the, the full code to the planning commission at their May meeting. We'll present that to the council. I'm hoping for the second meeting in May, and at that time, we'll probably call for a public hearing or ask the council to call for a public hearing that, right now, we'd like to hold on June 6th. That's when the consultant is available to be here for that. So it's been a long process, just kind of wanted to give the, the council and the public kind of an update on that, that this is, this is going to be coming hopefully fairly soon. We do plan to advertise in the paper at least two times, plus there will be one publication of the public hearing. We'll probably do some advertising on KDOM also. Once, once the full code is, has been reviewed by the planning commission and we have a chance to get it all in order with all the renumbering and everything, we'll get it posted on the website and then start, start advertising so the public has a chance to, to view that. Any questions with that?
One question I have is when the council has an opportunity to look at that, I guess I'll refer to the revisions that you made of the redlined and whatnot. Will you provide explanation to the council at that time, prior to that approval? That many of us may not understand all of, of those revisions. Will there be some type of document that'll kind of isolate what, what the needs were to make that change?
In the, in the code, how we're doing it right now is it's, it's our code exactly how it's written. Everything that we're proposing to delete or will be moved somewhere else in the code is going to be highlighted yellow and struck. All the new language that's being added in is in red text. That's basically what we've been presenting to the planning commission. That's what we'll publish. There won't be an explanation within the document for each one. That's part of the reason I thought we would come, I would come and present to the council on my own prior to actually having the public hearing. So the council will have an opportunity to ask questions, review it at that meeting, and then there will be another opportunity at the next meeting through, through the public hearing process when the consultant's here as well.
That answers my question. Council, have any other items? Okay, no, I've seen they've done an awful lot of work with that. Had a lot of good discussion, as I understand it, and a lot of special meetings. So thank you for doing that and thanks to the, to the commission.
Yeah. The next item I wanted to touch on real quick is another project that we're working on. I'll give a little bit of back history on this because there's a couple of new council members here. In 2019, the DNR started a project where they revised all of Cottonwood County's floodplain maps. That revision changed the map floodplain in Wyndham using LiDAR technology to just more accurately map the area that would be inundated if the water levels hit the base flood elevations. That project did not change the base flood elevations. As a result of that, the DNR noticed what they called the disconnect in northwest part of Wyndham. That, along with changes in the watershed, bridge designs, the dam being removed, prompted the DNR to apply for a grant through FEMA to do a study of the Des Moines River through Wyndham. During their kickoff meeting with that, I asked if Perkins Creek was going to be included or if it could be included. They said that it couldn't be because the grant had already been awarded. The Army Corps of Engineers was going to do the onsite work and actual studying, and they, they weren't willing to expand or couldn't expand their scope of work. So basically, if the city wanted Perkins Creek mapped, we were going to have to take on that project on our own. So we contacted SEH engineers. They were involved very heavily in our 2019 project to get a, a cost estimate. If we partnered with the DNR and did Perkins Creek along with the river, there was significant cost savings to the city just because we could do a joint application to FEMA, joint review, and once we submit our information to DNR, they'll basically take that project over and do all of the review with, with FEMA. SEH has been working on this. The preliminary numbers, Steve and I had met with them last week. Preliminary numbers show a decrease kind of northeast, I guess it would be, of Highway 71. From 71 to Sixth Avenue, kind of through the central part of Wyndham along Perkins Creek, they're about even, not much change. From Sixth Avenue to the River Road, the Perkins Creek elevations actually show an increase. That area, however, is still at an elevation that's below the, the river elevation, and the river controls that because that's our confluence and the, the river's actually the flooding source there. So SEH still needs a few numbers and, and, and things from the DNR before they finalize all their stuff as far as base flood elevations, as well as the floodway delineation. But the project is expected to be completed along with the river in 2023. So we're, we're getting close with that. We will, once we get those final numbers and review it, we'll probably have to come back to the council just to authorize submitting that to DNR and completing the project. But that's kind of where we're at with it now. The council did budget money last year, so just wanted to give an update where we were with the project.
Any questions on that for Andy? Okay, thanks for the updates. Okay.
Tim Snyder, Wyndham Community Center Director. I just wanted to put in a plug for some of our upcoming events we got going on up at the community center. Tomorrow, we got Bank Midwest. I was bringing in a couple agricultural speakers, one of them nationally known. He's going to talk on marketing and future marketing strategies. Big event, they're, they're hoping for 400 and some people up there. So we, we were busy today getting that all set up for him. Then on Thursday, we turn around, Minnesota Association of Townships is having their annual meeting up there and rented the full facility, so they'll have a bunch of different workshops going on up there. Then we got Saturday, April 1st is the Ducks Unlimited banquet. Always a good time, come win a gun, and you know, they got all kinds of prizes and events going on for that. And then on the 8th of April, we're having, we're trying our first indoor garage sale. Or what we call one man's junk is another man's treasure. We're going to have up to 30 vendors under one roof. We're charging $30 a spot and setup will be on that Friday, the night before it. So you want to come and go shopping, who knows what you may find up there. April 2nd. That would, April 2nd, Steve, that would be the Lion's Pancake of breakfast. I forget, that's, we're, we're pretty busy from day to day and they're going to, the Ducks Unlimited guys, thank you to them, they're going to help us set up Saturday night before. So it's really nice in a small community that you get these other organizations. They came and said, hey, we'll help you set up when we get done. And I also want to know, I don't know if anybody knew, but tonight at 5 o'clock, I was leaving from the community center and heard the sirens and all that, and what the heck is going on? And I think somebody's dog went through the ice up on Cottonwood Lake. And man, they, the firemen were on it, and I think the guy was already swimming back to shore by the time some of the other ones got there. So shout out to our, our fire department for quick and saving this. The young man was kind of frantic as he was standing there on shore, so.
Very good, thank you. Any other department heads? Now Andy can come back.
All right, Andy Spielman, building and zoning official. So I've included in your packet a minor subdivision request. This was submitted by Abby Healy on behalf of Scooters Coffee, along with the property owners Wyndham Duffy's Incorporated and Mork Properties LLC. And I think we have an aerial included in the packet. That's probably going to be the easiest one to explain right there. So the area that's highlighted in the light blue there is 745 Second Avenue. That property is owned by Wyndham Duffy's Incorporated. The northwest corner of that property, right there that Steve is circling, that's 765 Second Avenue. That's owned by Mork Properties LLC. This request is to split off the, the northeast portion of the Duffy's property. So the subdivision request is actually to subdivide 760, 745 Second Avenue. And then that 50 foot by 100 foot piece will then be joined with 765 Second Avenue. 765 is currently a 100 foot by 100 foot lot. With this additional, that would become 150 foot by 100 foot lot. Also included in your packet was a survey that was completed by a licensed land surveyor. It's a little bit, a little bit confusing, and it doesn't help that it's in small print. But what they're showing is existing parcel one, and then towards the right-hand side of the page, there's existing legal descriptions for existing parcel one. Existing parcel three is the small 765 Second Avenue property, a legal description for that as well. And then in the same survey, they're showing that proposed parcel A, and then those kind of dashed lines with the arrows point to the extents of that, that new parcel that will become after this subdivision. The proposed legal descriptions for the proposed parcels are also included on the right-hand side. This was reviewed by the planning commission at their, their last regular meeting, and they did, they did move to recommend the council approve the minor subdivision. When this is all said and done, both of these properties or both of these lots will be legal conforming lots in the B2 district that they're in. The current Duffy's site does have plenty of room. We're not restricting their setbacks, we're not taking away any required parking or anything like that. So the planning commission is recommending approval.
Any questions for Andy first? Okay. With that, I think he's answered all the questions that I've had. Dennis?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minor subdivision of Block 1 of the original, original town of Wyndham.
I'll second it.
That motion is made by Dennis and seconded by Scott. Any further comments or questions on this minor subdivision?
Andy, do you know if they got any openings out to the highway fires driving in and out of scooters?
Yeah, if you go back to the, the aerial. So there's, there's currently an access to both parcels. They've been in contact with MinDOT, and MinDOT is not going to let them keep the 14765, which is the smaller parcel. They are going to let them keep the current right there where Steve is at with his mouse now. They're going to, MinDOT's going to let them keep that access. So they're, they're working on an access easement that'll actually run all the way from the highway across to the frontage road. That's, that was something that was discussed at planning commission and discussed with the applicants prior, but the, the new lot that we're creating and the existing lot that's already there, both have legal access without that easement, so it's not something we were really going to require. The 765, which is the smaller parcel now, has legal access off of 8th Street, and with this subdivision, they'd also gain access to First Avenue. But they have been in contact with MinDOT about that.
So that would be the only access then to off of Highway 60?
That would be the only one off of Highway 60, yep.
And the, is that both in and enter and exit then, or will they exit off of a?
It's, I don't think MinDOT was proposing a right-in, right-out or anything like that. So depending on their site design, and we don't have site designs or anything else for their building, but my understanding was that MinDOT wasn't going to restrict them as far as access.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a motion seconded, questions have been answered. I'll ask for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see another potential business coming to town. Very good. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Park and Rec Commission recommendation, removal, relocation of the dump station in Island Park. Has the council read the, did you read the minutes? Of, of that? Okay. And I'm going to give you my thoughts, and I'd like to know if you agree or disagree. But I don't, I honestly, I do not think the council is in position tonight to take action on this. I think that there's, there's history behind it. I think the research needs to be presented to the council before a, an answer is given. I think in the best interest of all parties that we would direct, and possibly, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that the, yeah, I do. But the, but the, I, I think it's, it would be proper for them to, what's the resolution for this? Okay, we have not, and are, are not the ones that I, I feel anyway should research and develop and find a location. I think in cooperation with the Park and Rec and the Utility Commission, who knows where all the sewer lines are throughout our community? I think there can be a good discussion with our department heads who are sitting at the table and to do a little more research on this. I think it's pretty evident that the location adjacent to a, a facility like is down there is probably not the right location. But I think there, before we, you know, if needed from us, before we take action, I think it needs to have more research and development on it. And I didn't know you guys were coming up to present tonight, but, because I didn't want to take that oppo, I, I was not doing this to take that opportunity away from you. So maybe you have different viewpoints, we'd be happy to hear those. But I just wanted to interject, I, I cannot see the, I, I hope that the council doesn't, you know, take that direction tonight with the limited information that we have. Gentlemen.
Yeah, I think maybe we're just here for, if you have questions or want additional information, maybe of what was discussed, I think is, is why we're, we're just sitting here.
And I, I think that's fair, and if the council wants to ask questions, please do so.
How much thought was put into it as far as another location? Or was it just planned to close it and not have one? Because I, I don't know if there is another one even in Wyndham.
No, there's no other dump station in Wyndham. We'd have tossed the idea around a couple of times. It was brought up a department head, maybe as a good spot would be out by the compost site, out by the new buildings and everything, out in industrial park there. That was one of the ideas, since it had brand-new sewer and everything else going there, it would definitely accommodate the situation. But it's been tossed around a couple of ideas, and that might be an idea that the people and commission can come up with a good idea and a good spot for it too.
And this is for the council members, this has been going on for 10, 12 years. And it's, it's something that's happened, it was discussed. I know the utility talked about it when I was liaison to the, to, to that group, and the trouble was finding an appropriate location. I know that's going to be tough. And, you know, I think it's, I understand the situation, and nobody liked it where it was 10, 12 years ago. But I, I think we should find a resolve to it. I think there are community members that go to just even area campgrounds that come back, utilize it by dumping at the facility. I, I think that's something that's needed probably in our community, if the council agrees to that, you know? And, and, you know, what are the plans for, is there still discussion of other campground areas in, in Wyndham? I mean, wouldn't you want it fairly close to that if, if that was the case? Just kind of some more background and what the visions are of, of the folks in your respective committees?
Yes, so there, there have been discussions on potentially relocating campground based on the, the one that's Island Park with the floodplain. When, when QuickTrip was coming in, there was discussion of trying to get them to put in a dump station. At first, they agreed, and then it was pulled from, from their plans, and so we, we've had that one. The, the concern or conflicts could be with Island Park because the location, if we do any improvements, then everything has to be brought up to code, which includes the dump station. Can't be relocated. We talked about bringing the dump station from the entrance of the baseball field, maybe down, you know, to a new location, but it can't remain in Island Park because of the floodplain code. So we can't relocate it in Island Park. So if we decide that it has to be moved, you know, we got to come up with a different location altogether other than Island Park. So that's where that conversation has kind of went. The baseball association would like it relocated, they want to improve the front entrance, they want to improve the bathrooms, but they really don't want to start that work until that dump station is not where it currently is, which then would present us with a, with the option of taking it out of Island Park completely. The, the other locations would, would also correlate with a new campground in Wyndham if the city decided they wanted to spend the money on the infrastructure to construct a new campground in Wyndham with a new dump station. That presented the case of, does Wyndham even want a dump station? Does Wyndham want to proceed with spending money to put up a campground? And then the locations and, and within the, the Park and Rec Commission, we just haven't got that far down the list of looking at that as an option. We still have a shelter to build in Island Park. We have other things that are, are on the list before we are, are looking at a campground just as a kind of background for all that, just so you're aware.
One question that I think would be fair to the council is, do you think we should have a dump station somewhere in Wyndham? Pretty broad, but.
I guess if the need is there, as long as it's been taken care of and the, the price has been brung up. Because I don't think the price has been added up for many years. It's always stated at a low rate, and on my point of view is if the city of Wyndham's going to get their, their, the most bang for their buck. If we're going to have one, we're going to have to either get it updated and put it in a nice spot where everybody can get out with new, new campers nowadays, 30 or 50 feet long, you know, so they got to move around, get in there, in and out accessible, quick off and on the highway out there too. But as far as people using it and not paying, we got to monitor somehow a little better that way.
I do know that, John, did you make the comment it's about 100 bucks a month or a month or whatever in the summer?
I got some numbers here and everything. In 2021, we made about $452 on it, is what they had, the girls had wrote down and everything. 22, it was about 400. It's open for about six months. Yes, it is on a, what do I want to say? It's up to you to pay type deal. I mean, there's nobody monitoring or anything else, and it's about 10 bucks a dump, so. So there is a few people that use it, but if we're going to be physically responsible and.
Right. I think another thing why Utility Commission should have some, some say in this is because I could see an issue if somebody wants to get rid of something that should not go into sewers. Okay, and, you know, what's the regulations on a new one and all that stuff? I, I think needs to be researched too. It's not just a simple answer. One comment to me was, well, we could put a septic tank in and just pump it out every once in a while. Well, I don't think septic tanks are legal in the city limits, so I don't think you're going to get there. Things like that, you know, but that's what utility people do most of the time, not council members, at least on a daily basis. But, well, Marv?
I think if we're going to continue to have a campground, we need a dump site at the same location. Otherwise, no campground, you don't need, I don't think you need a dump site for travelers. Otherwise, no campground. You don't need, I don't think you need a dump site for travelers.
Yeah, I think I'll just kind of add to that. You know, Island Park is not what you would consider a typical campground, right? We, we see it as a passer through amenity, you know, for people that are, are going through Wyndham. They're not, you know, coming to, to spend a summer or anything like that. And that's why we've had those conversations. When we talk about it on Park and Rec Commission, you know, we would look at a campground as something, they're in town for the fair. They're in town for a wedding. They're in town for River Fest. That they would have a, a place to stay for the weekend. That, that's kind of the, the conversations that have been held within the Park and Rec Commission as an amenity for an event. And that's why we've looked at, you know, space up by Teagle's Park, up by the, the community center to put in something in that potential area as a, as an amenity for people that are in Wyndham for a weekend versus, you know, doing something that would be a summer type campground that may require more of a, a infrastructure for sewer and, and things like that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Because it makes me ask the question, what about the campers that come in for the horse shows that we're trying to increase? That's an event that currently is, we're trying to establish and increase. Do they take it with them or what's that situation?
So at the fairgrounds specifically, so we even talked about, okay, would the fair board be interested in putting a dump station? Well, that would be a, something they'd have to do. That's their land. You know, we'd have to look at infrastructure, the cost of it, where can we connect to it, things like that. When it comes down to the type of, I, I guess, trailers or campers that are down there are pretty much livestock. They don't really have those types of amenities like a, a travel trailer or camper would have. So we don't really see that with the, the horse shows that there is a, a need for a dump station for those. Not saying that, that some of the horse trailers don't have sinks or showers or, or things like that. But most of them utilize inside the arena for toilets, showers, things of that nature. They do have water and things available when you have a facility. They would much rather come in and use that, you know, for, for that versus having to use their, their trailers.
Any other comments or what's the council's wishes tonight? We had a request to basically take action on either removing or relocating. Does the council want to take any action?
I guess I, I would like us, like to see the Park and Rec along with the Utility Commission researches further and come back to us. And I guess I can put that in the form of a motion, too, if that would be acceptable.
I would second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to refer this back to the Park and Rec Commission and Utility Commission for further consideration together, as long as our, as well as our department heads and the folks involved in this and do a little more research. Okay? Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, guys. I was gonna ask John about potholes, but he's got.
They're not deep enough yet.
No, okay. Not for that. Okay. It appears that we're back online, so if we have visitors out there, they can see us. Okay. Next item, urban deer hunt discussion. I'm gonna, I think I am going to let Steve start that one. I'm, I'd better not make my comments yet.
Okay. Pretty much in, in your packet, over the last few years, I'm just going right from my memo in the packet. You know, it has come up a couple of times at the council meeting about the number of deer that we've got in the community and some citizens having damage to their foliage in their yards, mostly flowers, things like that. I believe, what was it, about three years ago? We had a gentleman from the DNR come and talk about the deer and encourage people not to feed them in town. They're wild animals and best not to bring them in to attract them into an urban environment. So this last year, there's been conversation about the large number of deer that are run, running around town. And out on River Road, there's been a number of them hit. And so we brought this back to the council for your discussion at this point. The state does have special deer hunts for urbanized areas. There are archery hunts. The DNR does have this program. However, their application period for this next year is, the application form is in April for a September hunt. So we're getting this to you now in the event there's some discussion on your part or additional information you would like us to gather. What I included in your packet is a lot of information with the city of Blue Earth. City of Blue Earth has been doing this for several years. They've got a very well thought out and developed program, including letters, forms, scoring sheets for the hunters on their archery tests. This would be something that Wyndham PD would be kind of overseeing. We do have one of the officers that's expressed an interest in it, should the council decide to go ahead with it. Just initially looking at possible spots that are city owned. The two spots that kind of stood out were the Mayflower Park. As there's not a lot of housing around it, it's a heavily wooded area by, by the river, kind of out of the way of a lot of residential property. And then the landfill site, it's a fairly large open site. There's housing along kind of one side, but we could create a buffer zone. The minimum distance for a firearm is 500 feet from any residence. And if we just took that, this is archery, not firearms. But if we took that same buffer, we could apply that in, in, in the landfill, former landfill site as well and still have quite a bit of land there to have a hunt should you choose to do that. So I, I guess at this point, I'd just take questions from the council on any of the informations in the packet or anything that you would like us to continue to collect for your discussion.
Marv.
Was the area south of 15th Street where you entered the school, was that considered?
Yeah, Scott and I did talk about that right there with the proximity of the traffic that's going in there. That was one concern of ours. We kind of thought maybe after the weather was a little more cooperative and we weren't going to be either ankle deep in mud or waist deep in floodwater, we'd probably go out there and walk through it and take a look at it, see if there's some possibilities there. But that was another possibility. Obviously, the city doesn't own the environmental center, so we didn't even, you know, look at that. We did look at Dynamite Park, but it's just a very small area there. Maybe accommodate one hunter if they were positioned just shooting towards the river, that might be. But it was just too small to provide that buffer that we looked at. So that's why we came up with the two areas. But we, we did look at a number of, of spots in the community.
Well, I counted 32 deer standing just adjacent to Perkins Creek the other night in someone's backyard there. And, you know, we, we have a, a great neighbor just north of town on River Road going out of town. And you see all the deer hits there. I think some of them migrated into town once they got drawn to there. And now they're feeding in town as well. But, you know, there's no shortage of deer in town. I, I don't think there's much question to that. But, and Steve, did you include the stuff down along the river then? Could you?
Yeah. Let me pull up the maps that I had included in your packet just for reference here. Go back.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is, what you're seeing outlined in blue is Mayflower Park. So it would be all of Mayflower Park all along the river there.
Okay.
So one of the other benefits, shall we say, of Mayflower Park is that we have fairly seasonal use out there. So if we did a hunt in, let's say, October or late September start, we could just shut off this park to other users and use it, you know, just for the special deer hunt during that fall period of time, because there's not a lot of other users out with the, you know, frisbee golf baskets, things like that, where we felt that's more of a summer kind of use. And as you get into that fall, that kind of drops. And so this might be an area that could be more or less self-contained that way.
Okay. And my follow-up is across from, well, the high school entrance along the river there.
That's what I just talked about with Mr. Druenig.
Okay, okay. Okay, maybe I misunderstood that part. That one, did you have? I guess I'm sorry that.
Yep. We, we did, we did take kind of a look at it, but there's a lot of traffic going by on 10th, on River Road there. So we were concerned with some, maybe some of the traffic volume that's going through there. There's also some housing, obviously, right across the street from it. And so we wanted to, again, kind of have that area that we could buffer off fairly easily from residential properties. And police chief and I had planned on going out and walking it when the weather permits, just to see if we, if there's an area out there that could be, you know, host a, a site or two. But we wanted to get out there and look at it, but right now the snow is too deep and then the mud will be up to our ankles and then floodwater until our waist. And maybe the summer a little later, we could look at that as a site, too. But right now, these were the two that we just put out for your discussion.
And I know from experience, there is a tremendous amount of deer that are actually quite adjacent to the river. You know, where hopefully you can get that buffer maintained along the, the highway there and get something done there. The other question I have, and I know that other communities that I've talked with also allow it on private ownership property. And I wondered if there would be any residents that are in the river area or something, a property that, that's not owned by the city, you know? And kind of look at the properties that are within city limits, but yet very agricultural kind of a, an area. And is there anybody, you know, that's willing on the borders of Wyndham that are just outside city limits? I, I haven't really thought of any yet, but it just came, questioned.
I don't believe that we saw in any of the literature that there were any communities that had anything on private properties.
I was asked by DNR when they contacted me. That's why I brought it up. So it'd be a question if they could be included in the city hunt. I mean, the thing is to at least lessen the amount of deer in town.
So are you talking about that landowner on their own property? You're talking about that landowner allowing other hunters on that property, just so we're clear?
I am asking if that can be part of the process in this application.
Right, and I'm asking for themselves or are you looking at them allowing other hunters?
As part of the other, they may not hunt. If, if they're willing partners to reduce the deer numbers in our community, maybe they're having issues. But, and I can't identify a whole lot of parcels right now, but I was just, it was questioned to me whether we'd include any non-public.
We can ask DNR that question.
Just ask them. And I don't know if there are many locations, but, so. Okay, Marv.
Three years ago, when this first started up, I had driven out to Jeffers Turnoff there and came back, and I counted 140 deer. There's a resident currently that said there was an excess of 300. Now, I don't believe a city hunt will be effective. And with reducing numbers, I think the DNR has to be involved with a special hunt or a relocation program or, or something. Because, because there's, there's too many deer, like you said. A few taken by more narrow within the city isn't going to change the numbers from year to year. But it's a start.
I think it could be, and you know, the, the, sorry, but I, I like this program concept. But I, I do think that you'd have a lot of people interested. And you can adjust the limits on deer in these special hunts.
The one that allows the most is the earn a buck. There's two does they have to take and then they get a buck. So that's, that's three deer per hunter. Blue Earth, they have 20 hunters. So if they maxed out everything, that would be 60 deer. We don't have, is, I don't know, we're going to have to look at this, see how many spots we can reasonably accommodate. But I don't know if we're, you know, in that neighborhood or slightly under that number. But just to give you a range of what's likely, you know, might, might a dent in 100, but it won't make, as large a dent in 300 maybe. But that's the kind of numbers we're talking about, and it's depending on the site. So it's three deer, you know, a kind of per hunt or hunter. That is, if you're in a special DNR bonus area, then there's other rules, but that's, this is, the rules we're under.
What about any walking trails that are out in that area?
Part of the discussion for closing Mayflower Park. And then we don't have any walking trails on the, there's no access on the landfill.
With the amount of deer that's out there, is there any other way to get rid of these deer with a scare? Like a flashbang or something type of thing? Or, I mean, there's got to be something we could, because like Marv said, there's, there's a lot of deers and there's going to be a lot of car accidents for safety wise, for pedestrians and people in town and animals. I mean, nobody wants to see a hurt deer wandering through the city of Wyndham, you know, with the leg dangling and stuff like that. That's not a pretty sight for nobody. But with the amount of deer out there, this, it's not just down there. It's all, I mean, I live up on Miller and there's deer coming up in the middle of my garden. And I just, it's frustrating. How, how do you take care of it? But deer are pretty, but people got to learn not to feed them too, because that's what's drawing them into town.
What are the council's wishes?
I think the biggest problem really is out River Road with, with the majority of the deer. And, and we're kind of limited as far as doing any hunting out that way. That, I think that's probably the ma, majority of the problem. Although there might be, I don't know.
But I also think we got to start somewhere, so I, I, I want to make a motion to go with the deer hunt. The urban deer hunt if, just start there, I guess.
Scott made the motion.
I would, I would second. I'd like to see what one year would bring, see if it's effective. And people all follow the rules and we don't have problems.
Also, I would think the council has another option prior to, you know, we can make the application now, but that doesn't mean we have to do it prior to, does it?
I, I haven't had the whole discussion with DNR. We've just got the form with them. But I can reach out to them, but I believe you would have that option.
To withdraw.
To withdraw, to, you know, before the September season, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll dig into it and get something back to you.
60 a year, if they're all does, means less though in the future. $40, 20 bucks, yeah. There's not 20 bucks, but, but, you know, and one last comment I got to make is I do know that these deer travel far, at least during the rut, the bucks do. know that these deer travel far, at least during the rut, the bucks do. And a deer that was seen in a picture taken right across from Marv's house was shot two and a half miles away the next day. So, I mean, you know, they move, I don't know if does move that much, but, and bucks sure do. Okay. We are on to the Personnel Committee Recommendations. First is the reestablishment of the sergeant position. We all have the memo, I don't know if Scott wanted the opportunity, you can if you want, but I think pretty self-explanatory, but it's always good to see the chief.
Scott Peterson, Police Chief, you have a memo from Steve in your packet. It's our intent to reestablish the sergeant position in the Wyndham Police Department. Difference being that the previous position was more of, was a exempt position outside of the Fair Labor Standards Act. This would be more of a foreman-type of position, if you will, onsite supervisor, and mostly at night. I would imagine you've read the newspapers, heard the radio, watched TV, we have a lot more going on than we used to. This position provides mentorship for our young officers, some direction, and makes sure that we get the job done right 24 hours a day. And so that's why we proposed that, and we'd ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any quick questions for Scott? Otherwise, pretty self-explanatory from there, I think. Okay, the motion is to approve the request, and that would be to establish, reestablish the sergeant position.
I'll second.
Steve, a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I, and that was to include Appendix F, which is our negotiated memorandum of agreement with the labor union, so that would be included.
Was that included in your motion and second? That's what I thought.
I thought so, too.
Okay. Any further comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, not motion carries. Thanks, Scott, keep up the good work. Jim, Dennis and Jim. Okay, the next one was the Community Center Union Part-Time Position. And we have a handout here, and you've got somebody picked out already. Yeah.
Tim Snyder, Community Center Director. When we were doing the budgeting back in November, we talked about that, the need for another part-time person. At that point, I believe it was mid-December was when the advertisement went out in the paper. We received two applicants, you know, internal, external, we advertised for it. One of the candidates was just not a good fit for both us in the arena, and we hadn't really got too many others. We just received one March 9th, Marty Robin. He was willing to come up Sunday at the Zeds volleyball tournament, so we kind of had an interview in the senior center, and he's got maintenance background, and he's, he's done some at various places, nursing homes mainly. And, and some of the background is, we're losing Ed Berger, and I just want to take a minute to thank Ed and all he's done for the community center, and we get a lot of compliments about the appearance of the community center on the inside. We're going to miss Ed, he's leaving on April 3rd. So with that being said, the two applicants that we had, you know, the first one kind of wasn't a good fit, it was, he was just looking for kind of some temporary work. Marty here is new to the Wyndham community, he lives out on River Road, he's been up at Morgan. Had a nice chat with him Sunday afternoon, and I said, geez, you know, we, we talked about it at the commission meeting on Monday, that, you know, the need for us to find a replacement, or someone to also help out up at the community center, and with Ed leaving on April 3rd, that really kind of puts us in a bind, especially these next couple of weeks, when we are really busy. It's, you know, and we talked about trying to find someone, and I gave Jim a call and kind of let him know about it, of what I had talked to with this guy. I, I really think he'd be a good fit for us, so I'm kind of recommending the hiring of Marty Robin for the Union Part-Time Community Center Arena Maintenance Assistant. It's a grade-one position, it's, is recommended to hire him at step six of the 2023 Union Wage Scale, with a six-month probationary period. At this point in time, he is not interested in the full-time position. I asked him, and he just, he wants to see how things go, and he's been dealing with some health issues. So I kind of want to, you know, hopefully, maybe it works out that way after six months or whatever, but we are still advertising for a full-time maintenance person for up there at the community center, and hopefully we can find one.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the hiring of Marty Robin.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to hire Marty Robin, as stated in our information. Any further questions? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're down to new business. Anybody have any new business they wanted to share this evening? Let me see.
Let me see, new business, old business, when trying to relocate the, for the Park and Recreation Commission, would it help if they had a thought, and they had about a campground at the same time?
I guess my feeling would be if they have a couple of locations that, one, of course, I would guess would be Cottonwood Lake area. You know, if they have general ideas, I think that'd be helpful, wouldn't it?
Mayflower.
Mayflower, yeah, well, I mean, something. I think that should, I mean, we heard comments of it should be near, something like that, if we're going to do it. But, yeah, I think that should be a consideration. Any old business? I have one piece of old business that I wanted to just touch base on, I wish Jenny was here. But, and this is in regards to, I read this in a minute, it's also the parking rec of the flyer for the Horse and Livestock Shows. Tim maybe knows, is, her and Pam have worked on a flyer, and you may want to come up here. Yeah. And just my question raised, you know, by the comments, I, I don't know who all is, was there a committee established or discussed with some of the horse show livestock people? Because, you know, my understanding was they were going to be involved in part of the development and help and all this. Has there been talk of that committee being established? Is there any forward thinking on that, and those people being invited to disseminate this flyer and working with you on that?
Yeah, so after our, our special meeting that we had, that next week, I met with a couple of individuals down at the arena, that we had a discussion of, you know, what roles would be taken on by who, so to speak. So in that meeting, what it was determined the best probably approach to that would be them just communicating within their user groups and the, the entities that they are involved with, to then get them their information to contact me, and then I would go through the booking process, because we talked about, you know, if they try to say, you know, this date, and knowing what's available, what's not available, what's, you know, that, that should all streamline through me. So they basically are in a, in a, in a stance that they would reach out to these groups, those groups would then contact me, which a couple of them have, by networking through those individuals, that they would help with, you know, information flyers. They did create a Facebook social media page that they kind of put out through their user groups as well, so there is some direction on that. But basically, it would still funnel back to me for the scheduling, for the pricing, for the contracts, and things of that nature. The pamphlet based, or after that meeting, Jenny Quaid said that she would kind of head that to get a flyer made. The, the new commission member, Pam, also working with Jenny, did come up with that, they, they presented it at the commission meeting. We're in the final stages of just basically finalizing that, getting flyers made. I, I am, I will be up the Minnesota Horse Expo, I have a booth up there at the end of April, so I'd be using that information to hand out to people that are interested for that.
No, that pretty much answered my question. I, I just, when we had the, the large user group here, it seemed like everybody was in interest to help and whatnot, I just don't want to let that go, if there's a willingness from those, those people. And I think it would be good to touch base, maybe with some of the more active people in those user groups, and just, you know, maybe share your flyer ahead of disseminating it, and, and run it through them. Maybe they already are, but I'll leave that to you.
Yeah, and that, and that's the, the conversations that we had, so when this flyer gets, gets made, and we have copies of it, they're going to be putting that up in different facilities, in different, you know, places that, you know, whether it be a runnings, or somewhere where you buy horse, you know, tack and, and things like that, so people would be able to see that, because they have information boards at the entrances, that that information would be shared, and they were willing to, to put that out.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, any other old business? Okay, council comments? Jim, you want to go first?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Scott?
I just want to shout out to the street department. We know there's a lot of potholes out there, and we know they're doing a great job, and there's only so much time in one day they can get this stuff done, and the weather's got to cooperate. So be patient with them, help them out if you can, if you see a great big one, get ahold of city count, or get ahold of a, or the, yeah, get ahold of somebody from it. Yeah, get ahold of Steve or John, and, you know, just be patient with them, they're doing the best they can, you know, our community's not the only one dealing with these pothole stuff, so just be patient and be careful without that, because there's a lot of them out there. Thank you.
Yep, good comments, you stole that one from me, you said it well. Marv? Dennis?
I have nothing.
Steve?
Just to maybe echo some of Scott's comments, Chief Peterson and I were out to the school this week for a meeting, and Superintendent said they wanted to pass along, thanks to the street department for clearing all the roads and having them clear for when the kids were coming into town, and teachers were reporting, they thought they did an excellent job with that, so they wanted to pass that along to John, so.
You bet, it's always nice to wake up in the morning and your streets are plowed, and I was impressed with, you know, them three inchers, they're a tough decision to make sometimes, especially when some of it thaws and goes down. But, boy, it was nice after we had that one blast, and they were out there overnight, and the streets were cleared, and the next day it was pavement. You know, some of those things and the timing, you got the pole somewhere, so you're doing good. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, and I think we're good. We are adjourned by unanimous consent. Thank you all.